Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this joint Southern County Council, Southern School District, School Board, Order. While we are doing untribed land right now, this is the first meeting that we had for joint meeting. So I'd like to call your order. I'm pleased as chair of school, Southern School District, Order Trust Chiefs. It's my pleasure in the duty to call order, Southern School District Board, our directors for this joint meeting with Southern County Council. Our let's all say it, representative people of the nation, the county, and the state. In the sacredness of this hour, O God, we bow in humble submission to your will and pray that our thoughts and our actions will be guided by your plan and purpose, not only for our lives, but for our council, our school board, for this community. May we work together to build a greater society, ensuring that our children are educated and that they have a place for employment in this community and that this community will grow and develop because of our affinity with each other. This is our prayer, Jesus, amen. Your children declare, a pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Father, on which his sins, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I agree, gentlemen, gentlemen. Our motion, Council to his own respect, will move to the second session. The topic agenda and the specials. And I know if they approve of your agenda. I would like to just to our board, that there be an exception in agenda as per the exception of I'll be on the executive session. I don't see the need for executive session for this particular session today. And I ask that we accept it, whether the consensus with that one change. Special. If we're willing, it is so agreed. Thank you. Okay. New members, we're here to have a continued discussion on the Southern School District 2023-24 budget. And I'm asking the school district, Dr. Wright, has the school district made any adjustments from the previous budget presentation?
Good afternoon, Mr. Council and the school board. Good afternoon. On Thursday of last week, I met with Kelsey from the county. Thank you very much, Kelsey, for your help and for seeing some of these estimates that she passed on to me. Sharing the information is great. And so she's always been available, and I'd like to thank you for that. Initially, I wanted to begin with a discussion. Initially, I wanted to begin with a discussion on fund balance. My auditor, my auditor was looking to join us virtually to make a discussion on fund balance and how it affects our budget. So at some point, they're going to chime in here virtually and join us, and I want to be seen to these two bodies regarding fund balance. So by real way to add to what you allow, I will follow with some information on our cash flow. During our discussion, we had concerns about the cash flow related to the discussion of fund balance. So I wanted to provide a chart on our monthly end cash balance for this district. And as you see, during September, it peaks at about eighteen million as an ending monthly cash balance and a low as much as eight million during March as an ending monthly cash balance. So that is the flow of the final numbers for general fund. This is after the two payroll return. This is after the four account payrolls that move each month each week. So that is an idea of ending cash balance that I wanted to provide. Again, the next slide talks about our payrolls, that we have twenty-four payrolls. They're now at about four million dollars each. Our terms payable runs from one point five to two point zero million between. And the cash balance prior to the audit on June thirty, twenty twenty-two was around twelve point one million dollars ending cash balance. Want to provide that information. Also, as it relates to our employees making less than twenty-five thousand dollars, I wanted to provide that information. There was any concern about is there twelve month employees or ten month employees? Well, regardless of what month employees they are, their pay is divided into twenty-four payrolls. They'll be paid back so that those nine months and ten and eleven months employees will not go a month without pay. But it is based on their salary, which is below the twenty-five thousand chopped up into twenty-four payrolls. Our pay, payroll pays our employees on the fifteenth and the thirty-first or thirty-fifth of each month. Another concern. Another, another concern with the new act, benefit estimates. For twenty-three, twenty-four, our benefit estimates that we maintain comes for about thirty-three point ninety-six percent, which is about twenty-four point eight one percent for retirement, seventy point six five percent of social security, which has been mainly various things over the years. And one that comes about one point nine percent. That is the total for my benefit rate of thirty-three point ninety-six percent. And this year's health insurance annual average is about ten thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars for thirty-year annual cost per year for employees to receive insurance. For some, based on the new numbers and some of the information that you see, the total twenty-three, twenty-four budget does not include an increase for retirement or lifetime, even though there are some people of age that have been told that are higher for those two items. However, the increase works on dollar on your estimate because you are already three hundred thousand dollars over. You guys have been at work for a while. And so that is the only benefit number that we increase. I wanted to stop right here. And I'm looking forward to our auditor, if this will allow, I wanted to give her her time, respect her time as well, to do this discussion on fund balance and how it affects our cash and how our cycle works.
I know we're about balance because I thought she'd take a point. And he kind of went over a little concept of what balance is, if you guys think we've got that. Your general fund balance, you can't have money, money that you have left there for. Um, fund balance, there's a couple of things that are important. One is the general fund, the Department of Education requires you to act minimum to have one fund's worth of general fund expenditures, kind of budget here. So that also happens in the Department of Education. And if you look at twenty-two, twenty-three budgets, well, the one that wants to study the income from the that each had to have twelve million, it's changed as your fund balance. Now, that's just the minimum. And the fund accounts is the money normally spent for the next whole month. Take, so, or the GFOA, which is the Government Fund and Officers Association, add minimum from the credit bank, which is about two months' worth of fund balance. And that would be about twenty-four million. We, at our parliament, we talk with other accounts, we tend to recommend four months' worth of general fund expenditures as a fund balance, and that's our couple of factors. But the June thirty to your end, if you tax revenue mainly coming in, talking in December, January, you have about five, four to five months before the bulk of your revenue or tax collection, your whole revenue compensation. And so you have to have money left over from previous years and really fund the upcoming months. You do get money from the State Department of Education and other ways, but the bulk of that will revenue that's not restricted does come from that, that tax mileage rate and that, the tax, local taxes from the county. So we recommend a fund balance of four months. That's really to cover you through July, August, September, October, the four months during the time you're waiting on the next round of tax revenue to come in. So if you look at what you guys have at the June thirty, twenty twenty-two audit, that's thirty-nine million. That's not only cash, it could be a mix of different things. It could be cash, it could be investments, it could be receivables from the government, it could be receivables from the county. It could also be receivables from other funds. Because a lot of your general funds, a lot of your restricted money, you have to actually spend that money upfront in order to get it back. So you, your general fund is also funded as other funds. So the fund balance isn't just made up of certain accounts. There's other items that make up fund balance and all the stuff you've done. So we looked at June thirty, twenty-two audit, that's thirty-nine million, like I said. And that's about twenty-seven percent of the next year's general expenditures. Four months' worth would have been thirty-three percent. So it's not like you have this excess cash out there that's just sitting there. That money is being spent from July, August, September, October, while you're waiting for the bulk of your local tax money to come in. That kind of includes a bunch of situations, you guys have.
Thank you for this information.
Uh, it's true.
Where they were, so you mentioned what, what causes. My question for the committee may not be for giving answer, but what forces any of it is our Southern School District fund balance.
Right. And to that, so let me say this to you. In years, right, I've been telling what it was in June thirty, twenty twenty-two. We audited that timeframe, so that it shows where it comes back. If you can go look at the charts and find out some statements. And I, I don't know if I can share the screen or not, but let's see. What is that now? So if you look at this, just you've got to find it, you think from last year. Because I'm going to, I'm going to read information a little bit better. This column right here is our fund balance. Let me ask you, search online. As you can see, you had sixty-eight million dollars in assets. In the oven, you had cash in your local government investment portfolio, forty-four million of it. From crosswind tax receivables. I'll be honest, a lot of times when I think about that, that you have, that number you may collect for current year, but it's always going to be here, so that means compared to cash, releasing that one, I can actually look at. Then you had fourteen million due from the treasurer. You had a million dollars due from the State Department of Education. And then you had one point eight million dollars from other funds. We're going to ignore that to grant prepayments as those track your fund balance. You roughly, that's what made up your assets. Of that, you had twenty-two million dollars automatically due out to the beginning of your expenditure for January twenty-two, whether that was a group payroll, whether it was invoices that came in, actions that were in relating to the prior year. So that's all through tables and rolls. And really, those, that's what makes up the thirty-nine million dollars, is your assets, minus who I built. Now, you always have forty-four million dollars in cash. Sometimes you have a little bit more, sometimes you have a little bit less. But every month, you're going to be spending twelve million dollars. Because that's your budget for the next year. You're, you're spending some purchasing, some third to follow out here, about the same each month, give or take. You know, rise and fall here and there. So even with that forty-four million dollars in cash, that's gone in four months. Gone, that you've spent it all, because you're going to be spending over twelve million dollars a month. And then, and that's true, you can barely get any money from the Department of Education, July, August, September. In fact, if I, on average, I would say you only get ten to eleven, twelve percent of your hundred percent of our education revenue. You only get ten, eleven percent during that three-month period. The bulk of it starts coming in like October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May. So yes, you do have cash in there, but it's not like free cash. It's because there's, there's expenditures that are going to be paid in July, August, September, October, that you need, that like you don't have a lot of revenue coming in.
Actually, I think, yeah, absolutely. It's got a lot like military budgeting where things are just laying down, it's a lot of the cash is small. So I appreciate that, to do it.
Yeah, I mean, just saying this is so good, good thing about it is what's your budget, what's your expenditures for the whole year? I must say, so last year, they were a hundred million, twenty-three. On average, you're spending one twelve about a month. Because the bulk of what you're spending money on, obviously, you'll pay for all, so that's got to pay, right? That's in that people. So I like to tell people to kind of look at those expenditures, they come out one twelve. Your revenue doesn't form a claim. Your revenue comes from the Department of Education, and it should take the correct, if I'm wrong, but the bulk of it really starts in September and ends in May. Yeah. So you get that on a nine, ten month. And if your tax revenue, and the county people can testify to this, instead of that, but I would say eighty percent of it comes between November and February, just I think January fifteenth is the new date. So you have, you have revenue coming out four months period, but yet your expenditures are twelve, twelve, twelve. So that's fund balance at June thirty, no, you're going into a ball where you're not getting a lot of money coming in. Having that fund balance hot in June thirty is very important, so you can cover those expenditures. I do want to show, I kind of said this, I feel like anyone else might see my screen, but what I said earlier is kind of what I was talking about in fund balance, because I'm a visual person. So this is kind of what, like what I'm saying. One forty-six, which is your budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. Here's the state mandate in minimum, if you don't have that, you get a fine, and there's a state department, which will watch your warning. The twenty-four that the industry gives, they'll suggest a minimum, minimum, not what they suggest you have, but that minimum. And then the revenue, this is for June thirty, you're in, tax budget is four months. What you guys had your last audit position, you had roughly three and a half months. So you guys are sitting on what the industry recommend, a minimum of fund balance being. In line, you don't have an economic impact, it's going to, it's going to make, it's going to come around with budget cuts. So you see, snows have four months of expenditures, which is, which is how, how we need our balance. Do I have more questions or comments? If you have anything to add, it's very clear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I think I heard, and I would like for the auditor to confirm, I think I heard the same thing that Brian Mittelson said, who's also an auditor with Morgan and Jenkins. And what he says is that the contributing factor to the increase in the general fund is because of teacher vacancies. And that's, that's where the increase is coming from. And then I'll go just a step further and quote Dr. Wright, who talks about the teachers. High teaching staff vacancy totals create noncompetitiveness. And so if the salaries are not competitive, then we're back to Kelly Services, and then we're back to hiring retirees. And I think my number is correct. I think we have about a hundred and twenty retired teachers who are back in the classroom with the proviso that lifts the penalty for the ten thousand dollar cap because the district has been unable to recruit teachers because we are noncompetitive. And if the auditor can just confirm what I am saying related to the fund balance being the major contributor of increase in funds, I would appreciate that.
And so last year, from twenty-one to twenty-two, you added nine million dollars to your fund balance. And a lot of, a lot of that was, like, she did tell me you had a lot of vacancies, but to the requirement of funding jobs, having the right number of positions, you were under budgeted. And a lot, and that's, that's why you had an increase, because you were under budgeted in a lot of areas. And I believe from talking to Chetina, there was about a hundred and something jobs were not filled. Of course, and I, and I don't remember if it's general fund or what we're talking about, but there was, there was quite a few. And I don't have that big of a, but I know there was quite a few vacancies for budgeted positions. But also, just to take a step back, I mean, Southern County was put on this watch. And I was called to audit, I think, in seventeen, because you didn't have a minimum fund balance requirement. And so the district has actively tried to fill that up for years. I don't know that that was the case this year, because I did actually report the audit review on it. So I wasn't involved in the day-to-day of the audit. But, you know, that, that nine million, I believe, also some of the general fund expenditures, which you would normally have in general fund, were covered by Esther, who cares for me.
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up question. If those, if those one hundred vacancies were filled, what would the budget have looked like?
You could look at your budget to actual, let me, let me look at that. Again, as you had in June thirty, twenty twenty-two, I don't, I don't, I don't have any plans related to. You guys were, yeah. So last year, you budgeted a hundred and thirty-two expenses and only had a hundred and twenty-three. So the nine million was the difference between what you budgeted and what you actually spent. And again, I believe the bulk of that was payroll and related people costs, it's just got started. You have to retirement, and all the groups have been twenty-something percent, your taxes have been seventy percent. You've got your health insurance, not a hundred percent sure percentage of what that is. But you're looking at thirty, forty percent on top of what you pay was that, that you didn't have either. And if any of those jobs were filled by a team, you didn't have benefits on that either, on the actual expense. So theoretically, you know, they can easily start adding up. Again, I don't have the exact figure, I can't keep that company, we maintain, keep in our files. But the vacancies were probably a big part of not being, not being under budgeted for the year.
So would it be safe to say if those positions were filled, would the school district, would it have been over budgeted?
I think you can probably speak closer to that, but if the position fulfilled, it would have come a bit closer to budget. I don't know how, but I can't give you the dollar amount. Yes, that is inaccurate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got a quick question. Do you have a projected excess fund balance for twenty twenty-third?
Uh, she can, I can go over with you, because we have not started that part of our articles. But that's not something that I, I can speak to right now, because that's not. But that's not something that I, I, I can see to right now, because that nine million, the fund balance, or if you can take up maybe a few more information on that.
So if you have a hundred vacancies, twenty-twenty-three, would that be your fund balance in future?
Well, our fund balance that we show, we do start out the bottom of our reporting month that I get to the board, that I get to the board. I have a part at the bottom that shows what the fund balance would be. And we start with the third one-sixty, because that is the ending from last year and comes to the end of this year. And right now, because we have not received all our money from the state, we have not received all of our tax revenue and some other, um, revenue amount, amounts. We're not showing an increase in fund balance. You know, because we get most of our, that we show a slight decrease in the fund balance. We're not adding to the fund balance, keeping that as a noun, because we have not received all of our money. And that would have made.
So twenty-twenty, you had eleven billion surplus in fund balance. Twenty-twenty-one, you had seven million. Twenty-twenty-two, you had nine million. Twenty-twenty-three, you're saying zero?
I'm saying that as of now, because we have not received all of our money, we're two millions of dollars a year.
Maybe come September, we're gonna show a fund balance of five, five billion.
We, we possibly could, but I want this box, these two boxes to know that we budget based on the need that we have for classrooms. We budget based on the student-teacher ratio, because that's how student budgeting works. And so we have a number, not all of our vacancies are included in the, in the budget. It is what we need to be compliant with state.
So you said that all your positions are budgeted?
Not every single vacancy that we ever had has been, um, we have, we made cuts. We actually made cuts last year.
You cut positions?
We cut positions last year.
She cut ten, 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 um, I have some in age or whatever you call it. Is that correct? Because I remember her saying she cut ten or five.
I think it was more than ten, maybe, yeah, about ten is what I.
So you took those out of the budget?
Those were out of the cuts, the salaries were reduced from the estimate, okay? And we budget by the levels of, of, is what we do. And so that was reduced just last year. And we helped that reduction, but even though we had some salary numbers that we had to add. And in response to the, um, concern about our employee contribution estimates, we added the increase in salaries related to the teachers, thing with the, the specs with the $2,500 per sale. But we did not increase retirement and FICA on those new salaries. So as you're seeing in the handout that I provided, we won't see any increase but on the worker comp line, because we've exceeded that already as of, um, as of the May report. So yes, this budget does include some reductions.
And, and, you know, from my side, looking at y'all, and what I hear is you come and you ask for 12.75 million. And then come September, October, you report out that we got a five to 10 million dollar surplus. And then that's where I start getting bombarded by our local businesses mainly, saying why are you giving them 12.75 million? Where two months later, they've got a surplus of five to 10 million dollars. So I mean, I, that's where I had to sit down and explain my constituents of why or how that happens.
I understand that. And to this day, right now, as of today, we don't know what that's gonna be, because we have not received all of our revenue. We have not.
But I got one, one other. So when we were listening to your author, was she saying that for your twenty-twenty-three budget, you're gonna need to take money from twenty-twenty-four at the beginning to cover? Or I, I got confused with that. What was she saying exactly?
What she was saying was, last year, we had, uh, my fund balance of thirty-two million. Then we added the nine, because as a result of the vacancies and all of that, we added to that. And that became a forty-one. And so, um, that is, uh, that accounting number and the cash related to that, which was about what? She said thirty or twenty, twenty, twenty-eight or thirty million, whatever that number was. We have to then use the cash related to that to cover operations for the first four months of July, all this.
So you're using your fund balance to cover the last thirteen months of twenty-twenty-three, the end of twenty-twenty-three?
Well, our year starts July, July. And so July, August, September, and October, those first four months is what we need to, the cash left to cover, because we're not receiving our revenue at the rate that we need, because we still have payrolls.
But after those four months, then you gonna get a hard surplus of money that comes in and balances it all out?
Well, we hope that that's what happens, but then our, our one twelve keeps going up. Every one twelve that keeps going over and over. And so that money is, we hope to get, but even then, we're here at June, and we don't show a positive addition to fund balance as of right now, because we have not received all of our money. So I would be predicting, um.
So your fund balance is showing a negative right now?
It's, no, it's showing a negative, negative, a subtraction, not an addition at this point.
And the last question I got, I'm talking about us, was the, or, uh, was the twenty-three thousand dollars for your, I guess, what was it? Um, it's only making less than twenty-five thousand. I know last, last meeting, y'all said that y'all had, your lowest paid employees were what, twenty-three something? And that was for twenty-twenty-three, right? So, uh, twenty-three, we got something, we have this. Oh, that is, I thought, yeah, you were asking me in general. No, no. So the, so that was for twenty-twenty-three. And it's, my understanding, Mr. Washington used that, that there were gonna be, there would be a twenty-five hundred dollar added to their salary in twenty-twenty-four.
Well, the only twenty-five hundred that we had is for the teachers, on the teacher's bill, to increase the sale by twenty-five hundred dollars.
So that's not support staff?
That's teachers.
I thought it was just support staff. And, and that what you told me, Tom, that, that the support staff would be getting the twenty-five hundred?
Oh, you're talking about bus drivers, they have another.
I'm not talking about bus, I'm support staff. It could be custodians, it could be cafeteria workers full-time, it could be.
If they are classified as a state employee, they will get a twenty-five hundred dollar increase to their base salary, not a bonus, on their base salary, up to fifty thousand dollars a year. If their salary exceeds fifty thousand dollars a year, they will get a five percent base increase across the board.
So that, so that's, so that's general state employees, in, in the, in the, in most states, but in the state of South Carolina in particular. Teachers or education employees. With its convenience, trying to figure out, say, with its convenience, sometimes we are not classified as state employees, this would be the case. We are a state agency. But teachers, in our realm of things, there is legislation on board to increase teacher salaries by twenty-five hundred dollars. But that does not affect the rest of the employees in the district, anybody who's not. I thought that's the, what you said.
No, but no, the teachers get a twenty-five hundred, and then the bus drivers get one, but it's based on the salary that they have. So that's, that's. That's included in my estimate.
Yeah, my, my question was, so that person make twenty-three or whatever.
If they're a bus driver.
Better than twenty-twenty-four. That seems to be twenty-five hundred dollars.
If they're a bus driver.
Bus driver's own.
Own, that's what I want to say.
Like, that's, that's, they not considered state of all. But, Mr. Baker, that is, that is typical of, I, I will go on state and say this. That is typical of the way states sometimes create issues for us in education. They will send out pockets of money, you know, they'll say, this increase is for X category of person. Then for us as school districts, the difficulty that we run into is we are then having to figure out how to compensate fairly the rest of our employees. That's why when the teacher raises only, you know, then we figure out, we're going to be a classified employee. If you earmark, and, and, trust me, we need it all, if you earmark, these increases are for bus drivers. Then exactly what you're discussing was now becoming a problem. What do I do with the rest of the classified employees who come to work and work forty hours, we, two weeks a year, just like everybody else? So that's the difficulty, and sometimes people assume, just like you maybe do with years, that when there's legislation for state employee raises, that that automatically includes school districts. It depends on how the legislation is written. Sometimes it does, I, I, I understand, I, I live in the city of forty-five years. So, sometimes that is the case, and sometimes it is not, because the pots of money that educators are paid for is different. Even when you look at retirement, there's state employee retirement, and then there's teacher, you know, there's teacher retirement.
Same thing without insurance.
Same thing.
Same thing without insurance. They puts in their employer piece for state agencies. And in school districts, they put in their employer piece for school employees.
But that's why I was, I don't understand how a custodian would be different than a bus driver, they're still a state employee. We don't, we don't see them as, we don't see them as being different, but on, on the other side, sometimes when, well, I'm getting out there. So sometimes, I'm talking about that question. Sometimes when legislation gets released, an earmarked specific job title, particularly in education, which creates situations where we are then scrambling to figure out how to treat all of our employees the same way. We, we need bus drivers, yes, but we also need custodians and professors.
The simplest way to explain it is that they're a unfunded mandate. The county gets them, we get them all the time, we talk about it, the school dis- district gets them as well. And that's essentially what it is.
It's an unfunded mandate, that the school doesn't correct it, it's gonna be a major problem if you let it come. Yes, sir. That's, that's good. Okay.
Mr. Baker, yes. You say you went over, you got budget protection from May, right?
What's, what's yours? At the last, um, monthly financial report that I provided was, um, May four.
What was your budget, the expenditure pressure, your revenues, or your revenues exceeding?
No, no, as of May, the last report showed my expenditures were exceeding my revenue because, because we're not receiving all of our revenue. We're gonna give, um, a twelve-month allocation and a thirteen-month allocation to the state.
So will you pull that revenue back in? Where is it standing?
Well, um, I have to look at it and see if we've made the mark on our other revenue lines, because some lines we haven't made the mark from the estimate that we had of the one forty-six million dollar budget. And so I have to look at that and report that out. And then I'll have a final report, I don't wanna have a final report for this year until July or August.
And, and, and just to piggyback on that, that, that is typical operational business for a school district. We're faced with this area. We have to build budgets based on projections all the time. I know other people have to do that, but school districts is really difficult. Because we're building budgets and trying to submit them and get them approved, when we haven't even received a great portion sometimes of revenue from current year to operate. And, and I know that everyone has to do that, but it's really difficult for school districts, uh, but she was gonna move the target. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, yes, thank you, Chair. And I would just like to thank the school board and my colleagues for bringing to me today. If you recall, in my last meeting, Councilman Burd mentioned that he wanted to have this talk. And, uh, I suggested that y'all just come together to a table, um, so that we can, you know, get a clearer understanding of what we are going to be doing, a decision is going to have to be made, and, uh, this is education. Uh, my question is, you mentioned the twenty-five hundred dollars, and you mentioned, um, how a state employee is divided. My recall that I expressed some concerns about paraprofessionals. And, um, because they are a big part of the instruction in the classroom. All the times, they are the ones who have to take things and move on when the teacher is not there. And, and so many times, it is my opinion that they are undercompensated for the jobs they do. And so I'm just wondering, are they considered, uh, state employees like the teachers? And will they also receive the twenty-five hundred dollars, um, on their, you know, on their salary base as like?
No, that is for the teachers, that scale is for the teachers. But what we are looking to, we have retention efforts that will, um, benefit them. We have some bonuses that they would apply, they would be, um, allowed to participate in during this week, as well as, you know, extending the five days that we wanted to do for additional training. Um, and so they have some opportunities, um, depending on how this budget process, um, ends up. Uh, so we haven't forgotten, and we do know that now we have to secure everyone. Everyone is important, and we just need to do the balancing act to try to cover that and make sure that we take care of everyone to, to retain them.
Thank you. We have another part of that. Um, it's, my understanding that in the Terry process, that paraprofessionals were allowed to Terry like all other state employees. And, um, just wanted to know, is there any advocacy out there for them? Does anyone advocate to the state for, uh, the parapros who work so hard to keep things going to the state?
Um, I'm, I'm thinking there are some training, um, opportunities for them, but I can get with our academic department to see what those opportunities are instructionally. And I'll let you know, but there has not been like specific line item budget just for parapros coming from the state or what have you. But we can see what other, um, items they have, um, to take care of those paraprofessionals, because we do know their value.
And if, if I may on that too, um, there, there have not been a lot of state initiatives to, to try to help the parapros, but really, most classified employees, I'll say it that way. Uh, what we tried to do here, um, when I got here last, last year, again, last school year, this school year, I was looking at. In October, there was an eight percent across-the-board approval to increase salaries. Previous board, this board here has also looked at, uh, retention efforts, retention bonuses for the upcoming year. Um, we have had a practice in, in South Carolina school district since I've been here, boards have. When we look at retention efforts, trying to do things to retain employees, we don't look at clas- classifications like most funding legislation comes, we look at your employees, the dedicated tribe district. So we're trying to do things more in a cross-the-board fashion. Um, and fortunately, we've been able to get that done for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And it's more recently proven, an increase for, uh, or a bonus for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The help that we need is exactly what you're talking about now, though. We're gonna have to have some folks getting serious about helping those employees that you're discussing now, um, at the state level. Because the reality is, classrooms need teachers, but they also need paraprofessionals because of the assistance and the work that they provide. Um, there's a lot of research out there talking about the value of paraprofessionals, and it, there's no question about that. And it's high tech that we can compensate those folks for working, and everything. So thank you, Mr. Baker.
Mr. Chairman, um, Dr. Wright is speaking to and mirroring exactly the same thing that is going on at the state level. Um, particularly with your critical state agencies. Not only did they get the twenty-five hundred or the five percent, but most of those agencies who provide critical services, we're talking DHEC, DSS, SLED, Highway Patrol, LHO Health, Department of Special Needs. On top of that, they also got money for retention. And then they also got money. And then they also got money for recruitment. But I think one of the most telling things to me about this school district that the businesses that my colleague, the councilman from Dazzell referenced, businesses being concerned about is I noticed that the school district now has reduced the qualifications to be a substitute teacher. It's not a college degree. It's not an associate's degree. You'd be surprised to know, Mr. Chairman, that the requirement now for a substitute teacher is a high school diploma. So those businesses that talk about the education that our students need to compete in the workforce, we need to think about the folks that we're putting in the classroom when teachers aren't there. These folks have high school diplomas, and that was done earlier this year. And that's very helpful.
I have a question on the budget. Actually, two questions. One, clarify this for me. I'm kind of confused. On the bus driver, when you first, when you presented to us, you got expenditures of five hundred sixty-four thousand and state revenues of three five. I understand states get all that up. Do y'all do a different increase in the state or...?
No, we pay an addition onto the state.
So what was the study paid for? State giving increasing bus drivers. I just wanted to ask a different question. You got a higher pay than the state.
That's correct because we pay more than the minimum state salary for bus drivers.
Next thing is, are you...? Well, my research shows that school districts will receive a million dollars more than expected from general revenue, growth revenue from the tax base. Have you budgeted for that this year or next year because it's a million dollars more than you know we had in the year? Or are staff companies going to get a million dollars extra in the budget? Are you aware of that? Have you got a budget for that?
Yes, I met with Kelsey as of Thursday of last week, and so we've updated those numbers on that budget to reflect that.
Okay. So you know you actually read that last year coming in as of Thursday, right?
That was, yes, that was part of that. But again, it's within that budget.
And that's what you presented tonight?
Right.
Okay. Not last night.
Mr. Chairman, follow up. But even with that billion dollars, that does not cover the two pieces that you talked about, which would include addressing the teacher issue, the maintenance issue, and then there was one other issue. Is that correct? Because that total was much larger. And the numbers that you gave to us was a reduced number. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then after leaving with the county on Thursday, we agreed on the amount to put on that line. And that they even expect to get the, when I mentioned the... The WBE that we were concerned about, or the county does believe that they'll receive those funds, that they will pay on time, and then we adjusted for unpaid, we adjusted for some other estimates and additional new data that we got, better estimates from the state from the county's perspective and from us. And we put it together, and that is the, what you see on that report is what we landed on. Again, it could change again next year.
So let me just ask, with the requests being made, if we implemented the request, where would that put us in terms of other districts within an hour's drive of us? Because as we talked about the last time, there weren't very many districts, maybe one or two, that were in... Yes. So if we implemented the request, where would that put us in terms of comparative analysis with districts within an hour of us?
We would have more of an opportunity to kind of match because our HR managers and directors, we talk across school districts. And so we'll say, what are you paying your bus drivers? And all people are doing, all the school districts are doing is going up on, going up, you know, increasing and being competitive. And so before we do that, we have to again consult the budget. But it will make us competitive to do what we're planning to do, even though it's not everything that we need to do. Because we came up with over six million dollars of retaining, retention opportunities that we wanted to do. But it will help us to get into that and to start that process with that and dedicate those dollars because we don't know how many agencies we're going to have at the end of this whole thing. Because especially for next year, we don't know what that's going to be. We don't know how much we may add. But we have to produce a budget that will cover the classrooms for what we need and what is state required. So that's how we build a budget.
But at this point, you would deem the district non-competitive with most schools within an hour's drive of us.
Absolutely, you are non-competitive. Absolutely.
So let me add something to the answer to that question because I want to be clear about this. We are in the final stages of having our salary study done. So let me just say what I could say, because this is what I know right now. There's going to be projections going to come out of that. This is not, ain't typical. That we need about a five to six percent increase in salaries to become competitive with, to actually become competitive with not just Clarion and Orangeburg, but become competitive for at least the same ballpark of Kershaw and the Lexington schools in Florida. Because that's really how we're going to turn this thing around. We can't just be competitive with... We can't have fifteen school districts and say, well, we'll be competitive with about three to four. We're going to have to be competitive with our higher performing neighbors, say. So this two percent increase, sorry, two million dollar increase, if we got it all, would not solve five to six percent increase problem, but it's going to help. Anytime I can now say to an employee, no matter what category employee they are, I can offer you more than I could last year. The challenge that we have in school districts is while we're having this discussion to try to increase here, so are my neighboring counties. So, you know, we here in some districts, I'm not sure how they're doing, but in some districts, there are three, four, five thousand dollar bonuses, salary bonuses for teachers, you know. Because...
Have you ever heard of it? There is a scenario?
We've got to charge schools to do the same thing. So for us, the short answer to the question is, yes, it would absolutely help. Whatever county council decides, we'll work with and try to make it better for them. Our commitment is it's going to go to employee raises. That's what we have to do right now. But our needs are much greater than that. We talk about facility needs. We talk about ultimately how to get employee salaries where they're continuously created. And like I said, salary study will show five to six percent of needs for us to get competitive with the districts that they use, which is ten to fifteen districts in our area, mid-ins area. Ultimately, though, without salary increase, we're going to need all. We're going to need services improvements at some point as well as just focus on increasing salary cover. And I don't want to rehash this, but as I said when we met in county council headquarters, we're behind. We're behind the eight ball trying to catch up.
Thank you. This sheet there where you say employees make a mess in one thousand five hundred and fifty? Is this bill one thousand five hundred and eighty-five employees that are making less than one?
That's correct.
I ask you for this information. To bring that salary up for these employees, I know you don't have down any of it, but... How much would it cost the district to bring that salary up to twenty-five thousand dollars for these one thousand five hundred and eighty-five employees? Because we have sort of, this council has said, it's sort of really standard of what these type of people should get, a super standard, which is twenty-five thousand dollars. Because I thought it should be twenty-eight, but I went along with twenty-five thousand. Now, I have prepared a statement that I like to read. And I want you to become part of the mix because I think it's very important for the community service. Today, as you know, it's June nineteenth. But on June nineteenth, nineteen sixty-five, Union Army General Gordon Grant arrived in Galveston, Texas. His office worked on informed enslaved African Americans that the Civil War had ended and that they were free from bondage from slavery. A message delivered more than two years back to President Abraham Alvin Lincoln had signed the Emancipation Proclamation in September, on the second, nineteen sixty-two. Since that day, over one hundred and sixty years ago, African Americans in Texas and other states have observed this anniversary of freedom which now they know as Juneteenth. That's the day we're celebrating. I thought out from heaven, day off, but I'm here. The day significance, however, was that wildly known outside of African American community. The day significance, however, is not wildly known outside of African American community. After years of advocacy and dedication, President Hatt, twenty twenty-one, recognized Juneteenth as a federal holiday. Our country's seventh independent day, and many Americans have been introduced to this remarkable story. South Carolina does not recognize Juneteenth as a federal holiday. I guess that's why I'm here. Why is the history of Juneteenth so relevant? For over two years, enslaved people who were freed, continue to labor from sunup to sundown, live in dilapidated tents and eat discarded and unhealthy animal products in order to survive. What those humans experienced then is what many people living and working in Southern county are experiencing today. Since we are here to defend and village requests of Southern district officials, I will focus my remaining confidence on this topic and why I so overwhelmingly support their request. Southern school districts write at the bottom of twenty-five percent. Sixty-two out of seventy-two schools are public districts in South Carolina. Over the past four years, Chinese Southern school district schools have been classified as poverty schools by the South Carolina Department of Education for failing to meet state standards in reading their math. These schools consist of five elementary schools, Chertville mentioned twice in that study, three middle schools, and one high school. In education, failure is not Southern school district's problem. It is a Southern county's problem because it impacts the quality of workforce, future economic development. No saying when you invest in yourself, others will invest in you, eighteen twenty-one. Southern county council has a responsibility to enhance and sustain economic development by supporting our government force mission to increase birth后的income by creating jobs and lowering capital investment to our community. However, to do this, we must ensure that the Southern school district employees, other than teachers, are available and motivated. We must assure that they are paid living wages that are compatible to other citizens, living in decent housing and have sufficient and healthy food for themselves and their family. We must also assure that Southern school districts have enough bus drivers to get all the students to school on time so that they can eat and be able to concentrate on their classroom. I realize that we have half the economy within the Southern county. However, to make Southern county's a place to live, learn, work, play, and pray, we must respect all our citizens. We will not tolerate if we continue to pay, and I want to repeat that, if we continue to pay slave wages to essential workers in the school district and stock the failure of students at our elementary school as the twin is meant to be in college. I have stated my reasons for supporting the old village request by the Southern school district board trustee. I'm asking every councilman and school board trustee to show properly run, treat others as you want to be treated. Anything less, then more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a clear, I hear, you can copy this one.
I have a couple of questions. I still have a question. You said you can bring back retirees and they don't have to pay. It was where if a retiree retired and they came back to work, they could only make like what was it?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand. So y'all, because y'all cannot recruit, I guess, the people in here. The state has let you bring back the retirees, full retirees?
And not just the school districts.
That's statewide.
Statewide.
So statewide, state agencies can do that as well. There are a number of state agencies that are doing that. There are a number of school districts that are doing that as well. So you're talking about seasoned teachers who hire, come back with a really high pay when you add your retirement to it. So that's a huge incentive for retirees out there. How many, you know, you hear the rumor, Bill, I was right. One time I said y'all had a hundred and thirty teacher openings and asked like seven ninety-eight or something like that. Is a lot of those, the y'all close that get with retirees, that come back to teach? Retire isn't their national teacher.
Yes.
International.
Yes.
How does international work? Is that, is that a, is that more costly?
Yes, that's a contract, a company that we purchase, we pay for that. And that doesn't run through our salary. That's a contract.
Without having, I'm giving resources correctly here, I'll do a quick version of the question. So international teachers, first of all, like you said, they're hired through a agency. So there's a service fee that you can use. They also typically have teaching experience because they've taught in their native country ten years, twelve years, which is an advantage in terms of their ability to do the work. But we got to pay them for it too. Because we have to pay them on scale. If they're a twelve-year veteran, obviously, you couldn't pay them much for that with salaries. There are some rules that set salaries, but the additions are, you know, if I'm a three-year teacher, I'm still going to get paid in five years or whatever it is. But the bottom line is for international teachers, it is just another way for us to try to get certified people in the classroom. And in many cases, they do as well as a native born teacher. Some type of benefit. It just depends on the needs and what they're teaching and how well they adapt to culture and the language here. We're happy to do that. Back in, in the fall, some school districts used to have a ten percent salary reduction for retirees returns. Our board lifted that. So it's not state defined, the board can lift it. They, they, that part, so there was a ten percent reduction. So you, so they could make ninety percent of their salary. Now they can make a hundred percent of their salary. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman. Because again, you did that to try to, to try to bring that hundred, that number you pulled earlier up here.
Mr. Chairman, let me explain why that was done. Several years ago, in Act Two Seventy-Eight, when the state tried to save their retirement system, there were provisions put in place. And one of the things that happened is the Terry program was discontinued. The Terry program allowed employees and teachers to work for a period of time, retire, and come back to work again. Get both salaries. Everybody thought it was great. Get both salaries. Everybody thought it was great. But it had an impact on our retirement system. It didn't compensate the way people thought. Because the thought process is, I retire and come back, then I can double my salary. But what people didn't understand is that effect had a negative impact on the retirement system. In other words, it affected people's behavior because then they retired earlier and they drew money earlier from the pension system, which reduced the amount of money in the pension system, which created the unfunded liability. And that is why that was changed. The reason that this proviso is in place is because it is just that, a proviso. A one-year deal. It is not permanent law. And it is being done only until we can get out of this critical scenario that we are in. That is not a permanent solution because it will kill the retirement system. And many of you read articles around the country where a lot of states are changing or disbanding their retirement system for this very same reason. Or either they're changing their retirement system to a full one K or full three K, both of which were never intended to be permanent retirement deals.
Now, I'm just saying, having it this year will help you with teachers. Especially senior teachers that are coming in with twenty-eight, thirty years of experience. Uh, and I think that's a big part of it.
The board has to vote on the area to get the permit. It's a proviso, a state proviso.
The board has to vote for it.
And they did this in twenty fourteen. This is then. They voted, the district voted on this in twenty fourteen. So this is not new.
So you're not going.
They re-voted it in December, but it was originally voted on. It was the chairman, Dr. Cannon. You can correct me if I'm wrong. But it was originally adopted in twenty fourteen.
Boy, I'm just a vocal holler.
That's all right. I got you.
I just, I got one more question. Um, in your budget, you got steps. It's like a one point two million or one point one million. And that steps is to include your support staff. Is, is that what you were saying with that?
Um, well, the amount for the, um, when I was got the expenditure increases that we were anticipating, is that the former?
Well, you had it as steps and I think you explained to me, all of the teachers.
It was for the teachers.
Oh, I thought you said all of the teachers.
One line was for the teachers. It's called Certified Teacher Salary Step to the tune of one point nine million dollars. And then there was the classified, um, steps or other staff to the tune of one point one.
That's what I was talking about.
Yes, those two.
So that, that one point one million steps would y'all put in this budget to give all employees, not teachers, a step each year, just like a teacher?
Exactly.
Why would you not do a call?
Um, because these employees are on a step, a step schedule and they've been off of this because of not being able to fund every year for classified. We're mainly the teachers' step. But the classified, we have, there have been years where we did not get that approved to do. And so some people are two and four steps behind on their classified scales related to their, their scale. And so, um, that is also why we have this salary standard to see, um, what, what competitive amount should be. This is the amount based on the scales that the district has currently.
And this is part of the twelve point seven five?
Well, it's part of the whole budget of expenditures, but the twelve point seven five is gonna go to the retain, retain, retention of employees.
Two point four million?
Yeah.
Dr. Wright, you said earlier that twelve point seven five million was going to increase the salaries of teachers. You just said.
Employees. I said teachers, I mean employees.
That's, that's retention. The teachers, well, the employees. To retain, because we got to retain not just teachers, but just about everybody else. We have to retain them. That's what that is.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question, Dr. Wright.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you have an opportunity to talk to your non-teacher employees.
Yes, sir.
Simple people.
Yes, sir.
So you know they're hard to retain, what they're going through. So this board, uh, has the right members of the school board to talk to those employees? Or do they have to go through you?
I don't know. Can they talk to that?
Yes, sir.
And the board members talk to?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Well, you know what? Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to encourage you to talk to some of those employees. I just talked to two of them this week. Two. One I recommended twenty years ago. And she's now what you call now maintenance worker at Janitoria, maintenance worker at Little Drive. She's been there for twenty years. Her salary is twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars a year for that. That's, now that's ridiculous. And I've talked to another one who not taken out all of the things that she can take out because she said if she do, she won't have enough money to live. Now, we gotta do better. I mean, I'm, I'm just. And I know those people because I served in the school for seven years. And I got to meet not just teacher, but the other workers there. And because they used to be considered even more, even rather sub-teacher, I was just working. But I also have been on the Career Center Technology Board of Advice for eighteen years. So I talked to them. I know them. And we got to do something. We can sit back here all we want to. But nobody in here would want to live on twenty-one or twenty-two thousand dollars a year. None. And for us to sit back and not help those people is a shame. It's a godly shame for you not to want to help those people. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, okay, one, one of the, one of the driving forces behind this conversation we're having today, and I get it. I'm a business person. So I, I, I understand where my colleague from Dazzell is coming from. So I get it. But the main driver behind where we are now is Act Three Eighty-Eight. And Act Three Eighty-Eight is a creation of the General Assembly. Now, certainly jointly, the school board and county council can, can communicate, write our delegation, ask them, encourage them to address Act Three Eighty-Eight. But, but, but that is the genesis of where this problem has come from. And until Act Three Eighty-Eight is adjusted, amended, gone away with, and a new system created, we're gonna be having these same conversations every year.
We're talking. That's, that's political. And that's gonna take, you know that it's gonna be hard to change that Act Three Eighty-Eight with the, the political background on the state right now. I mean, and that is stuck in our head. So we gotta figure out how to deal with it.
You're right. Because, because we gotta look at why Act Three Eighty-Eight was created in two thousand and six. Uh, Republicans with Charles and General Simmons, they created to take taxes off the homes of rich people in this state. So that as their property was being reassessed, someone was being taxed out of their home. So they took school funding, offered private homes and put it on business. They directed it to businesses. They say the businesses and people having rental property, so forth, will take it up. That's what they said. That's what the act. Now, nobody, a lot of the youth people who have wanted to repeal Act Three Eighty-Eight, but with Charles and people in General Assembly said, no, they're not gonna repeal it. You know why? Because they're not gonna pay taxes on their five hundred thousand million dollar home. They don't want to. That's the problem. So they're not gonna repeal it. They're not gonna repeal it. But at the same time, we got, and I'm, I'm gonna say this, it's gonna get me heartbroken. Business people who got businesses are burning all the rest of the people that mind. And that's a, a problem to me because you should refuse your second. You, you are a business person. You, you want to pay it immediately too. You're making jacks on the house and making rent, making jacks on the business, which the law says you should. You'll support local education.
Come on. So you're saying the most. The one biggest employer of Southern county should have those sites on, on they get taxed, which is our small business.
Listen, that's the law. That's the law. If you're in the General Assembly and members in the General Assembly and all the Republicans are not gonna change the law.
Mr. Chairman.
They're not gonna change the law.
I, I got some. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, that's all politics and that's not gonna, that's not gonna get fixed right now. What we're coming down to is us coming together and figuring it out. Of what, twelve point seven million or zero? It really needs to come together as, as how could we in the long term fix the problem? And, and right now is, is to come, come up with a, a way of strategy to, to kind of compromise. We're not gonna fix this overnight. Twelve point seven, we already know it's not gonna get fixed. It's not gonna fix our problem. So how can we do to benefit all of our taxpayers, our, our people in our community? Not kill them with taxes, also making sure that, uh, our kids are taken care of. It's a balance. And we have to come up with a balance. It's not all or none. We have to come together as a team and focus as a team and try to, the long term, what we can do in the long term. But as you can tell, Dr. Wright says twelve point seven is not gonna, it's not gonna fix. It's not. So, and, but the thing, the thing is, we, we gotta remember it's basic economics. You start taxing the, the businesses out there, you're not gonna bring businesses here. Look at Kershaw. They're getting homeless, uh, uh, up there in life, with all that. So that's why they have nice stadiums and the, and the good schools and all the, the maintenance. It's all that tax base is going up there because they got low, low taxes up there. So we need to come together. Because if you start increasing the taxes on the businesses, no way it's gonna come, come here. They're just gonna go somewhere else. But we have to gradually figure out a way to fix our problem. And it's gonna take, it's not gonna take overnight. It's not gonna take two years. It's gonna take ten, twenty years. But we gotta come together. And I'm glad I've come together. I think this is the first stop of the start. But we need to come together and start, if it's a couple of villages here and start moving our ways. Like if you're thinking we're gonna go and get this fixed overnight, it's not gonna happen.
We're not gonna solve it by nipping it down, people out there, like you know what I mean? Now, they're entitled. It's not something that somebody pulls out of the air, okay? The Southern County Department of Revenue says what school district are entitled to admit. So they're just asking for what Department of Revenue says you are entitled to admit. They're not asking for anything more. And they can't ask for anything more. So it's not there. But we're not gonna make any progress by nipping it down. We're, we're total damn power. They were three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in six years. Come on, man.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think all of my colleagues are correct. Uh, Councilman from Dazzell, Councilman from Highway Three Seventy-Eight, board member Palombo, it is a political issue, but we are here as leaders to talk about political issues. And even though it may not be solved today, it's something that needs to be addressed moving forward. So to not raise it and to not talk about it is sticking our hands in the sand. And I'm not here to do that. But I agree, it's a political issue. Um, the fact is that businesses have required, that students have appropriate education to enter into the workforce. The numbers that we're looking at here today, the vacancies that we're looking at here today, what the district has to do to get teachers in their classrooms, the age of the buildings in the district, all of that suggests to me the school district needs help. They've not had a full village request funded since, you wanna tell me? Councilman, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seven, seven, six, six years. And the notion that businesses are gonna raise prices, businesses are already raising prices. They've been rising in prices since COVID. They're gonna continue to raise prices. The thing that I find interesting is that C E O pay is up more than it has ever been. So everybody is not feeling the pinch. But what we have to do as leaders is make sure our kids are educated in a fashion, that they go out and make a living for themselves. That's what we're here to do. And that's the issues on the table. And I am in support of what my colleague from Highway Three Seventy-Eight has proposed and suggested. And I intend to vote for the full village.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Wright.
This was a question I made. I wanna make a couple of clarifying points. First and foremost, uh, the, the request for the village increase twelve point seven five million is a result solely on the fact that we're behind, we've got to make ends, as I've said all along. I want to be clear about Southern villages. I don't want this to be taken out of context. Uh, I am in no way saying, um, that we would not be appreciative of and use the village increase, no matter what the amount is. We are asking for twelve point seven five. That does not exhaust our needs for, for, for absolutely help. Um, but I, but, but for me, it's not a twelve point seven five or similar. That's, that's not, I'm not saying that at all. Uh, in fact, uh, I understand, I understand business, right? So I get the, I get the business side probably better than most people that sit and see my mind. But in the Southern school district, in order for us to produce the kinder student that we all want to produce over time, we're going to have to invest not just in education, but in education holders. People that are doing the work to prepare these young folks. And that's not just teaching. That's everybody that's a part of our school district. So that, that's why the ask is here. It's not about trying to, um, stick it to anybody. It's not about trying to, um, not be in compliance with legislators and things of that nature. This is simply, uh, a request to try to get us back to the point where I can go out and actively recruit the best people I can find to work with our young folks. Because that's what it's gonna take. The, the work that we have to do to make children better and reduce poor visiting bar returnees, to reduce a better product and a prepared young person, it is going to take investing in the people that serve. Right now, I'm offering employers thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. That, that's just an example. I, I'm offering. I got parent professional, y'all see the math here. Fifteen hundred current employees are making less than twenty-five thousand dollars. We are not competitive when I'm going out trying to recruit people. Because we all know that we'd get over buggies and make twenty-five thousand dollars.
More than that?
More than that, yes, sir.
Before I, let me read something about school board asking for all one point two million from the county. And this is dated June twelfth, twenty nineteen. But I wanna read something from my book, Brown and Brown Penn. Says, at the time, here's the board chair. The board chairman, Reverend Brown Penn, said with the vote, it is not the board's intent to collide with council, but that in, in this opinion, a compromise is not in the best interest of the children or of the county. We believe that a vote to deny our request is a vote to deny and neglect our children and our county. That's from Reverend Brown Penn. So I want you to know that when you start talking about compromising, we're compromising now. That's why I'm here and got it. Well, Mr. Chairman, there was a council. There was a vote. Well, Mr. Chairman, there was a council, there was a board, staff, faculty, staff. I think, it was a common conviction. And that conviction is, it is cheaper to educate our children than not educate them. It's far less expensive, no matter what the dollar amount, to educate than it is to be uneducated, unprepared. The reality is, we have to work together. This council, this board, government, and education, we've got to work together because we have got to reimagine, reshape, redevelop education in South Carolina. We're doing so much good in this community. But we're probably, a lack of commitment to our educational system is hindering us as a community from making that great giant step forward. This year, we're expecting six hundred, six hundred sixty. We found this as show our face boys. How many of them will live in South Carolina? And how many of them will live out of South Carolina simply because they decide that the educational system in South Carolina is not going to be for their children?
Amen.
Amen.
How many people working in this community? No one will live in this community or have never lived in this community. Choose to live outside of South Carolina because of our educational system. There is not a one of us present here today to not know that national, the red flag in South Carolina is public education. Either we're going to change that and throw this as a community or we're going to continue to exist pretty much as we are. I don't know any way for us to do it, Dr. Baker, than together. We may have different approaches, we may have different philosophies, but we got to rub shoulders and rise and come together and make South Carolina the great county that I think every one of us want to be. Education is an essential, essential part of that development. And how much education is critical to the education we just have? And so, as we prepare to leave here today, I pray that you will all think about what we can do to give permanent education a lift, a shining light, the most that will take it to a place where it hasn't been in years. And a last light will be strengthened. We would have known a major task in race relationship, major task in developing museums, recreational facilities, developing a strong relationship between our county, the base. And now we're working together because education is preventing us from being that perfect county in South Carolina. Where businesses, more businesses, more businesses will welcome, where more families will welcome. Or young teachers will be anxious to come, to be a part of, of progressive work. It can happen. But it only happens as we decide together. That we are going to make South, South Carolina the greatest, greatest, living in South Carolina and we're going to do whatever it takes to make that happen. That's, that's, that's all I got to say. Amen. And I apologize if I said too much.
Amen. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Um, I agree, I agree. Um, just want to ask one, Mr. Chris Dent, and I'm not sure if the, I don't have a next person that's in a position to answer it. Um, of course, as I said, a decision is going to have to be made. Uh, I was hoping, uh, one of my goals was that this being, we would be able to be here with more good and maybe on a unified front. Um, but I would like to know, and everybody here, um, if county council were to be able to pass and grant the, the twelve point nine or twelve point seven bills. Of course, that is going to cause us to have to increase mortgage, we have to reduce countless, um, counties' operation budgets, then we have to consider what is being asked of the school district. And of course, we're going to have to do something.
And I just wanted to ask, I don't find this people, what, what, what for that cost? And I didn't do this to you, Mr. Dent. Um, let on a, say a hundred thousand dollar home. What burden collect this on the benign owner occupied homes and compensate a better for small businesses? Just to be on the opinion.
Not to know. When we can sort of get that.
So as, as we, um, you know, seeing, um, throughout our budget discussions and getting closer to make a decision, um, this town's person right here, me, I, um, I am sensitive to, um, the business community and, and an absolute component, component of this, of public education. And I will add though, that education is not the only, only aspect about county that these people want to live here. Commercial developments will be part of it as well. And so all of us, members of the, no, I won't say that. Um, all of us are stakeholders in South Carolina. And, um, with our influence that we have on education, commercial development, economic development, we need to utilize and influence to try to make something better. And, um, and I just want to again to thank everybody for coming. We're going to continue to discuss and really hone this thing with the mind to hone to see how we can, uh, be able to help education, uh, but also not place a big burden on the backs of the small businesses. And that, that's my word.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry. Just before the, Mr. Chairman, can we also, can we also agree, whatever decision the county council makes, can we agree to keep this conversation going between us? Whatever decision. That's, that's the next step of conversation. Let's keep the conversation going.
I want to make a motion to adjourn. You're going to honor the people for adjournment?
All right. Now, South Florida, motion not necessary for a term, but we do. We have consensus for a term.